Okay, it's 5:30. We'll now convene the meeting of the Steenville City Council. May I just reflect that we do have a quorum present with absent members being Mayor Savine and the place seven.
Mr. Nix and Mr. Cook.
Place seven, Mr. Cook, correct? And Mr. Nix, place seven. And Mr. Cook, he has placed wherever he is. All right.
Five and seven.
You like that official stuff there?
Yeah.
Okay, so at this time, let's call the order of the meeting, pledge allegiance if you would. Please stand. I'll ask Ricky Thurman to lead us in the pledge. If you would, the Texas flag and the American flag. Please start, Ricky, with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I'll ask current place code to come forward with the Steenville Church of the Nazarene. Lead us in the invocation, please.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to take an opportunity just to say thank you on behalf of our great city, for you city staff and city council members. We thank you for all that you do on behalf of our city, and we are grateful for it. But at this time, let's pray together. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for your many blessings to us. And God, we come and we acknowledge that many times, we don't know the answer. We have problems and difficulties, and we have decisions that need to be made, and we just, we don't know the answer. But Lord, I'm so thankful that we have someone who does know the answer, and his name is Jesus. And so, Lord, today, we come and we ask you, on behalf of this city, that you would provide the answers, and that you would guide and direct us, Lord. Help us to be thankful for what you've given us. You have blessed us so much, so tremendously, in this great city. And help us to be obedient to what you say. When you speak, let us say yes and move in that direction. And let us be joyful, for we are a blessed people. And your word, Romans, chapter 12, beginning in verse one and two, says, "Therefore, I urge you, brothers and sisters of Steenville, in view of God's mercy, to offer your bodies as living sacrifices, holy and pleasing to God. This is our true and proper worship. Do not conform to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind. Then you'll be able to test and approve what God's will is, His good, pleasing, and perfect will." And that's our desire tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Kurt. At this time, I will ask, we have a special recognition to make tonight, and I'll ask, I guess, Kayla, if you'll step forward. She made all the big trip from San Angelo here. She's with the Girl Scouts, and she has two very special presentations to make on behalf of the Girl Scouts Association here tonight. So I'll turn it over to you for a second.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you, City of Steenville, for your recognition of our Girl Scout Gold Award recipients. And so, in our Girl Scout world, the Gold Awards are, or the Gold Award recipients are our superstars, our Girl Scout superstars. And in their service, these girls spend over eighty hours working on projects that they choose within a community that they find near and dear to them. And with this project, they must find, they must provide measurable, measurable outcomes, and they must also create a sustainable change in a community. And so, with no other words, I will turn it over to Victoria, who is our first Gold Award recipient.
Okay. My name is Victoria Sausedo, and I'm a student at Texas Christian University. I am currently majoring in physics and doing the pre-law track on the side with hopes of becoming an IP attorney one day. So for my Gold Award project, I led a team of thirty-one professionals and ESL students to publish a curriculum for students in an area of great poverty in Mexico. So being Hispanic, I definitely wanted to include my family heritage into my project for my Gold Award. So that's why I ended up choosing Mexico as the place to receive the benefit of my project. And in the end, it benefited over two hundred-plus students, and it's being used as a supplement to the current ESL curriculum at several organizations in Chiapas, Mexico.
Hi. Sorry, I'm short. Hi, my name's Taryn Gibbs. I'm a student at Tarleton State University. I'm majoring in biochemistry. For my project, I worked with light pollution, which is a, is a problem that's not only in Steenville, but it's a global issue. It affects ninety-nine percent of all Americans and Europeans. So with my project, I first went around to Steenville local groups. I spoke to about a dozen of them about light pollution, its issues, and how to solve it, and what we can do in our community. I then worked closely with Steenville Independent School District to create a continuing curriculum that goes into the sixth grade science classes every year. It teaches them about light pollution, issues, problems, how to solve it. It also includes an email that goes out to the parents that teaches them about light pollution. I then created an experiment with PowerSet and WIT, which are groups at Steenville High School, that went around and taught students in multiple different schools in our area about light pollution. I then got shrouds, which are little metal pieces, installed all around the high school to reduce our contribution to light pollution in the area. And then I finished my project by working with these Student Government Association at Tarleton to create and pass legislation for them to reduce their light pollution usage. So, yep, that was my project. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to you both. That sounds amazing. I know those are a lot of hard work you put into those achievements, so I wish you the best of luck in the future, and however we can all help you out, I know we'll be there. So congratulations once again. And Kayla, thank you for coming down from San Angelo to present those awards. At this time, we have a couple of things we will offer you, though, as our tokens of appreciation. So if y'all want to come forward, and Miss Stacy King will give you those at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. At this time, we'll open the floor to citizens' general discussion. Do we have anybody that signed up or wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, I guess we'll move on to our next item of business, which is regarding the maximum tax rate for 2019. I'll open this up to Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, members of the council. It's at this meeting that we're required to set the maximum tax rate for 2019. Our property tax rate, our current property tax rate is forty-seven point five zero cents per hundred-dollar valuation. The effective tax rate is four-four point three seven, and the rollback rate is forty-seven point zero seven. As is the usual, at this time, staff respectfully recommends that a maximum tax rate of forty-seven point zero seven cents per hundred dollars valuation be considered as the maximum tax rate. What this vote will do is to allow a cap. You can go below the cap at future meetings, but you cannot go above the cap. Therefore, our recommendation is the rollback rate.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a maximum tax rate.
Can I just ask a question before we get to that point?
If you'd like to, I guess. Mr. McPent.
So, setting the proposed maximum tax rate tonight does not trigger any of the events that would be triggered in the event that you actually set the tax rate at that level? Is that correct?
That is correct. You could set the tax rate as high, well, as high as you'd like to.
My inclination would be to set the maximum tax rate at the current year of four-seven-five, simply because we have not seen the budget. As a group, the council has not seen the budget. We don't know what's in it. We don't know what's not in it. And so, again, my inclination would be to set it at four-seven-five.
Is that a motion?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
The move is seconded to adopt a maximum tax rate of four-seven-five, which is the current tax rate. At this time, we'll open that up for any discussion. Hearing none, I'll proceed to vote. All is in favor of adopting the maximum tax rate for 2019 at four-seven-five. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we will approve the motion as presented. Moving on to the next item of business, I'll open up to Mr. Barnes, or I guess to Monica who wants to address it this time.
I think Monica.
So the state law actually requires that if you're going to have a proposed tax rate that is above the effective tax rate, then it requires that we publish some notices, and we have to have two hearings before you can actually adopt a tax rate above the effective tax rate. So what this is, is to set the date and time of those hearings for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, at 5:30 PM, and Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, at 5:30 PM.
Okay.
So we just need a motion to set that date and time.
Just pro tem, I'm moving that we adopt the tax rate, public hearings as presented.
Second.
As we move seconded to adopt the public hearings as presented, being September 3rd, 2019, at 5:30, and September 10th, 2019, at 5:30 as well. I'll now open this floor for any discussion. Hearing none, I'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes as presented. All right, moving on to the next item of business. At this time, I'll open the floor, I guess, up to, is this for Karen? Is this to open this, to discuss this, Karen, regarding the alleyway?
I can.
Okay. Or Mr. Barnes, whoever wants to take it on from here?
Either one's fine.
Karen?
So, we got a request to close or abandon the alleyway next to the Long Hotel. Let me get this pulled up. Staff was contacted by an individual interested in purchasing the Long Street Hotel. The individual asked about the process for having the dedicated alley abandoned in order to connect the hotel with the parking lot. Chapter 95 of the City of Steenville Code of Ordinance allows for the closure of streets and alleys by petition or council initiative. The alleyway contains no city utilities, nor does staff believe it is beneficial to maintain said alleyway. Staff respectfully recommends that the city council initiate the process to abandon the alleyway. If council approves the corresponding resolution, the item will be sent to Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and recommendation before coming back for council for final review, I mean, final approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Karen?
Well, I did have a couple of questions. Is the individual interested in just buying the alleyway behind the Long Hotel, or that entire block of the alleyway?
My understanding is if the alleyway is abandoned, he's purchasing the hotel.
Well, you don't abandon, but the alleyway, complete block.
But will that, but then will the business, other businesses be allowed to bid on the alleyway next to the?
They're the ones that have the right.
All right. That's my question.
That was my question.
Oh, okay. So we have this one question.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Karen. At this time, I'll open the floor. Do you entertain a motion? We'll have a motion at this time.
I motion that we abandon the alleyway behind the Long Hotel.
Second.
And I believe this is?
And that's 2019 R., what's the number?
Eleven.
Twenty-four.
Thank you. Carla, have a second.
Second.
Nick? Okay. As we move seconded at this time, that we adopt Resolution 2019 R. 24, initiating the abandonment of a twelve-foot alley location located in the block of fifteen of the City Addition, City of Steenville. Motion is available. Men will require a majority vote. At this time, I'll open that up for any other discussion. Any other discussion to be had?
So, just a question. So, this is just initiating the process. This will come back through P and Z first, then the council again? Is that the way?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll proceed to vote. All is in favor of adopting Resolution 2019 R. 24. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and Resolution 2019 R. 24 passes. All right, at this time, we'll move into the planning and zoning portion of the agenda. And I guess at this time, we will convene into public hearing at fifteen at 5:44 regarding case number SB 2019-002. So I'll now open the public hearing.
We skipped tourism, didn't we?
We skipped tourism, Marty. Well, thank you, Carla. I was just trying to move too fast, obviously. Okay, we'll back back up. At this time, I will now turn it over to Ms. Trussell and her Tourism and Visitor Bureau Committee. Go ahead, Ms. Trussell.
We met on the twenty-third, and we discussed council recommendations to policy procedure changes and as our guidelines. And so, staff is currently working on making those revisions. We had two requests for hot funds. One was from Extreme Team Roping Finals, and they requested thirty thousand dollars. The committee's recommendation was eight thousand four hundred. It was unanimous recommendation from the committee. I would make that motion that we give them eighty-four hundred dollars in hot funds.
Second.
As we move seconded by Ms. Trussell, seconded by Ms. McPent, that we had authorized the expenditure eighty-four hundred dollars in hot funds to the Extreme Team Roping. Any discussion on this motion at this time?
Okay. I've got a question.
Okay.
So, we've given this same entity, we've awarded them three other amounts in the last six months.
We did ask that. Were you, were you?
I would miss that one.
Okay. And I believe the amount was five thousand dollars we've given them already.
Did they provide any numbers from those three events that were, that we had already funded?
They, they have a registration form. They, they have participants fill out as to where they're staying, and they did go over that for us. And that's some of the things we're looking at as we address our policy.
But they did have those numbers from the last three.
I think I just would have had the same questions, Ricky. And I know you all are working on this, but I think it's, I've got to say it again, it's important that we get some kind of formula figured out on this, because we're, this is thirteen thousand four hundred dollars we're giving to a private company to run their event. And I just don't think that that's the best utilization of that money, to be honest with you. I'm sure they bring a lot of people to town, but that's nearly as much as we paid to be the sponsor of the big rodeo in town. So I just, I really hope that the committee works on that, so we can take the motion out of it and just put it on its straight numbers. This is how many people are coming, and not, because I really don't know how, what guidelines we have. And I don't really want to say yes to it, to be honest with you, because I feel like we're just giving away a lot of money.
We have a weighted checklist that we're working on. It gives more weight to nonprofits when we consider this. So that was one of the concerns we had to.
And maybe spread around as well, maybe new events and stuff.
We also, on the weighted, on the weighted checklist we're developing, there's weight as to if you've already received money during the calendar year, then it's weighted as to whether you get more money.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear that.
We are working on those things.
So I just want to add one comment to that, Brandon, because you bring up a good, a good point. The, I think the original request or the original motion out of that committee was for ten thousand dollars. And what we did was, we applied the actual numbers that they anticipated for this, less a baseline hotel occupancy rate, and that's how we came up with the eighty-four hundred dollars. So, I mean, we tried to use-
And I apologize, I wasn't there, so.
We tried to use some of the things we've been looking at in that policy, in this particular case, just for the reasons that you bring up, the valid points.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll now proceed to vote. All is in favor of awarding eighty-four hundred dollars in hot funds to the Extreme Team Roping Finals. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, with one no being Councilman Huckabee. Motion passes, and we'll award the money as presented. Ms. Trussell?
Okay, my computer won't off just a minute. Okay, this, I've got to find my place, because it went away. On the Nix, it doesn't go away if it's on paper. Okay, the second request for hot funds was from Steenville Sox on the Boski, and they requested eighteen hundred. We again applied the formula we've been working on. We came up with seven hundred dollars using the formula that we've been working on. And this was a request we struggled with, because they asked for the money after the event. And in our policy, we want to adopt a policy that if you ask after the event, it's too late. But this is a group that fills up a lot of hotel rooms with an athletic event, and so we did vote to recommend seven hundred dollars in hot funds for this event. So I'll make that to motion that we give them seven hundred dollars in hot funds.
I'll second.
Move seconded that we allocate center dollars in hot funds to the Steenville Sox and the Boski. Now, at this time, when I open this up for any discussion.
I would have the same question on this one, and it may have been answered. But we also funded a tournament earlier in the year. Do they have those numbers?
And, yes, they had how many teams from out of town came that were out of the contiguous counties, and it was a multi-day event. So it appears that they had filled up the hotels. I don't know how you ever prove it exactly, but.
Are they a nonprofit?
Yes.
They are?
We did ask that question also.
It makes a difference. Yeah, and I'm glad that's weighted in there. So it sounds like we're moving the right route.
It is weighted in the checklist. And another thing on the checklist that we're looking at is, have you received these funds for three years? If so, it's time to let some new events in. So we're looking at weighting that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll now proceed to vote. All is in favor of awarding the seven hundred dollars to the Steenville Sox Tournament. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we will reward seven hundred dollars to the Steenville Sox Tournament.
Okay. And the last, both the Arts Council and the Historical Museum presented their annual budget requests at this meeting, and those requests will be addressed in our upcoming budget meeting. So there's no action on those tonight. And that's all I have, Brandon.
Thank you, Ms. Trussell. Now, we'll move into the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Wilkerson to come back over to council. We'll open the public hearing at five fifty-one. So, Ms. Wilkerson, please proceed.
So case number SV 2019-002, applicant Dana Hornbeck is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 155.6.11, a sidewalk requirement to be constructed at 1051 West Elm, being Lot 15, Block 4 of the Fry Second Addition to the City of Steenville, Eret County. Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 17th, 2019, and voted unanimously to recommend granting the waiver to the city council.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Wilkerson?
I'm just going to keep going back to my same old tired song, that if, if we're going to continue to grant these waivers from the subdivision ordinances, do we need to look at changing the subdivision ordinances?
That was discussed, and there were two that voted against that.
This applicant did talk with me. This is an extremely small lot and a small house. And had I not granted the waiver, she said she was not going to build on that lot, because she would have felt like she had a parking lot with a five-foot, with her house and a five-foot sidewalk, she wouldn't have had any yard back.
That's correct. I had pictures to, we have technical difficulties, but there's pictures showing the lot. She also has a storage shed on that side street that that sidewalk would have run into. So.
Building a new house in that neighborhood is certainly an improvement, and she was going to abandon it.
It's a corner lot home.
I understand that. And I was at P and Z, and I heard it. I'm not particular on this case. It's just the question of, should we be taking another look at our subdivision ordinance, because we continually are granting these?
It is probably something we need to review.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, we'll close the public hearing at five fifty-three, and we'll move back into open meeting and entertain a motion to regarding this request.
I make the motion that we grant a waiver for the sidewalk for case number SV 2019-002.
Second.
As we move seconded to approve a waiver as presented. Any other discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor of approving the waiver for sidewalk requirements at 1051 West Elm. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and motion passes as presented. At this time, we'll reconvene out of open meeting and back into public hearing, considering case number SV 2019-003. Ms. Wilkerson?
Applicant Dana Hornbeck is requesting a subdivision waiver from section 155.6.04M1, which is the curb and gutter requirement to be constructed at 1051 West Elm, being Lot 15, Block 4 of the Fry Second Addition to the City of Steenville. Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 17th, 2019, and recommended a denying of the petition to the city council.
Any questions at this time, Ms. Wilkerson? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at five fifty-five, and reconvene back into open meeting. I'll now entertain a motion at this time.
I make the motion that we deny case number SV 2019-003 waiver of curb and gutter requirements.
Second.
Move seconded, deny SV 2019-003 waiver of curb and gutter requirements. I'll open this up for any other discussion at this time. Hearing none, we'll now proceed to vote. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes, denying the waiver request for the curb and gutter requirements at 1051 West Elm. Okay, we'll reconvene back into public hearing at this time regarding case number RZ 2019-005. Ms. Wilkerson again.
Applicant Tim Trotter is requesting a rezon of property located at Zero Dell Avenue in the City of Steenville, Eret County, from industrial to single-family residential district in order to build single-family dwellings. Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 17th, 2019, and made a unanimous recommendation to approve the rezon request to the city council.
Did you have any responses to the letter, to the surrounding property owners?
No. I had two individuals that came in. They were concerned about it being on Dell Street, but they, they were informed that it was the property directly next to them. So once they found out where it was, they were fine with it.
I didn't understand from the request, is he putting multiple residences on there? It's about a one-acre tract, right?
He is going to be replating that into four lots.
Four lots.
Mm-hmm.
What will the lots face? Because will they all, how will that work? Will two face Dell and two the other street behind it, or how will he replat that?
What he said was, the two of them were going to face Dell, and two of them were going to face Chalk Top.
Okay.
Any others questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll recess out of public hearing at five fifty-seven, and reconvene back into open meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve case number RZ 2019-005, rezoned to single-family residential.
And, Ms. King, that's ordinance?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Oh, sorry, ordinance. Twenty what?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Now, second. Okay. The motion made by Mr. Huckabee, seconded by Ms. Robinson, to adopt ordinance 2019-024. At this time, I'll open up any further discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance 2019-024 is approved. Lastly, we will recess once again out of open meeting into a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing at five fifty-eight regarding RZ 2019-006. Ms. Wilkerson?
Applicant Joseph Borges Jr. is requesting a rezon for a property located at 824 West Harleton, being Lot 1B, Block Zero of the Kite First Addition to the City of Steenville, Eret County, Texas. It is currently zoned, City Tarleton School. He is asking that it be moved to retail commercial business B2. Planning and Zoning Commission met on July 17th, 2019, and made a unanimous recommendation to approve the rezon request to the full city council. He will be putting a warehouse. It's not going to be storage buildings. It will be a warehouse.
Thank you. Any questions?
Again, any input from the neighbors?
No, I did not. It is a odd lot size. It's twenty-six front, eighty depth. They are going to be asking for a twenty-foot landscape buffer to ten feet from the rear, but no, I did not have any for or against.
Anything else?
I did.
Just me?
So, the plans for the building, do you have that plan, and you know how that building? Because I drive by, that's a very, very narrow lot.
It is a very narrow lot. They, it's going to be a prime building. My understanding, it's going to be twenty by sixty. I have, they have not submitted anything to me on the building size.
Okay. Well, historically, this street has had neighborhood businesses all up and down it, and a couple of years ago, we were asked to- And a couple of years ago, we were asked to rezone another property on this street to a commercial business. What I would like us to consider, so this issue doesn't come up on this street again and again, is to do a historical overlay over this street, because this is a historic street. It was originally Boski Street, not Tarleton Street, very old street. And it has historically had neighborhood businesses up and down it. So Granbury's done some historical overlays over streets like that, and they restrict what businesses can go in historic sections. So as we move forward and look at this street, I would like us to consider a historical overlay of the street.
Thank you.
And so with the rezone, there would be no, to the best of your knowledge, no impact, negative impact to the traffic on Tarleton? I mean, it's right there at the railroad tracks. That's steep on both ways.
Right. Property adjacent on both sides is already currently zoned B2, so it would just be in compliance with the properties on either side.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we recess out of public hearing at 6:01 and reconvene back into open meeting. I'll consider a motion. Yes, mister?
That Mr. Huckabee is abstained.
Yes, Mr. Huckabee's previously filed an affidavit of abstention regarding this issue, so. I'll now entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve of ordinance 2019-0?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, to rezone Kite Second L1B.
Moved as seconded.
Moved as seconded.
It has been moved as seconded to adopt ordinance 2019-025. Any other discussion at this time? Hearing none, I now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and 2019-025 is approved. Thank you, Karen. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Nick regarding Park and Leisure Service Committees. Go ahead.
Thank you. Park and Leisure Service Committee met on July 23rd. First item of my business was to discuss awarding the contract for engineering services for the $250,000 grant that we received back in February for the sidewalk and bridge street improvements in the historic downtown area. We are bringing this with a recommendation, a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Nick at this time regarding this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
It's moved as seconded to approve the contract with Jacob and Martin for engineering services for the downtown revitalization grant. I'll now open this up for any discussion. Hearing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we approve the contract as presented. All right, Nick, go ahead, next one.
All right. Second item of my business was, Tech Dot has released the opportunity for us to apply for grants, or the city's to apply for grants for sidewalk improvements specifically around our elementary schools. The first is from Central to Long Street Connection. It reads that this project will add 1,750 linear feet of concrete sidewalks, five foot in width, from Central Elementary on Baxter Street to Long Street. Project will add 3,700 linear feet of concrete sidewalks, five feet in width, from Alexander Road to Minter Street. Each one of these did come with a positive recommendation from the committee as well.
Okay. Even though they're either the same grant program, the same issue, we're gonna adopt three different resolutions, it appears, regarding this issue. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the first ordinance, 2019-026.
Make a motion to consider resolution 2019-R25.
One second.
R25, okay. It's moved as seconded to approve resolution 2019-R25. Open this up for any discussion at this time. Seeing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor of approving resolution 2019-R25, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and 2019-R25 is approved. I'll entertain a motion adopting resolution 2019-R26.
So moved.
Second.
Moved as seconded to adopt resolution 2019-R26. Any discussion? Hearing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. R2019, 2019-R26 is approved. I'll now proceed to entertain a motion regarding 2019-R27.
So moved.
Second.
Moved as seconded to adopt resolution 2019-R27. Any discussion? Hearing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and 2019-R27 is approved. Anything else, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for going after this, Jen, Nick. It's, this is another example of y'all going after the money we've paid taxes elsewhere to bring that home to Steenville, so I appreciate that.
All right, this time, we move to the Public Works Committee report. Seeing that Mr. Nix is not present here tonight, I'll get Mr. Barnes, do you wanna take over that?
Sure.
It's pretty simple. I can take it if you want me to.
I got it.
Okay.
I got it. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, the Public Works Committee met on July 23rd, excuse me, to discuss several items. The first item is a memorandum with Tarl, of understanding with Tarleton dealing with parking lot detention. As they proceed with their parking lots over by the football stadium, there's been some discussion with them about doing a regional detention facility. This MOU will allow for work to be completed within two years. Their estimate for a downstream regional facility is approximately $1 million, and they will also reimburse the city of Steenville for costs associated with plan review. They are not mandated, being a sovereign entity of the state of Texas, they're not mandated to comply with our stormwater detention like a typical developer will be. The committee recommended unanimously to approve the MOU with Tarleton State University as presented.
Thank you. Now I may should defer to Mr. Williams back there. Anything you wanna add to that, Nick?
Yeah.
You want the next one, though? I'll let you have the next one, okay. All right, before we get there, though, at this time, I'll entertain a motion approving the MOU with Harlan State University regarding the project as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved as seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we'll approve the MOU with Harlan State University regarding that project. At this time, I'll ask Nick, I guess, to come forward, and he'll discuss the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The second item at the Public Works Committee was the wastewater treatment plant annual operations amendment. We negotiated from the contractual amount of 4.33% down to 3.0%. Overall, that's only a 2.30% increase in the annual contract amendment for daily, day-to-day operations of the treatment facility. Glad to answer any specific questions?
Nothing at all? Okay. I'll now entertain a motion.
Mr. Pro Tem, I move that we accept and approve the annual operations agreement amendment as it's been presented.
As seconded.
Second.
Moved as seconded to approve the annual operations amendment as presented regarding the wastewater treatment plant. I'll now open this up for any discussion. Hearing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, we'll approve the amendments as presented. Thank you, Nick, for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, this time, Monica, you're up.
Did you, we've got one more item.
Oh, we didn't have one more? Well, I was looking at the agenda, I only saw the wastewater. I guess there's two with that, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, Nick, go ahead, last one.
The last item that was discussed at the meeting was alternate alignment update. Required no action, that's probably why you didn't see it on there. It was just an update regarding an alternate alignment for the East Side Sewer. And we discussed this, just to keep it in mind, as negotiations proceed with property owners along the original alignment, but again, required no action.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, sir.
Any conversation? Sorry, it's well, nothing about, no action, so. Okay, now I'll turn it over to Monica.
So these are the fourth quarter budget adjustments for our fiscal year that will end September 30th, 2019. A lot of this is things where we're now putting in the budget stuff that's been approved or happened throughout, during, during the year. If we approve these amendments, we would reduce our general fund total cash balance by a million, a little over $1 million, but this only reduces our unrestricted cash fund by 347,920. And to explain that, in, we had reserved $1 million for our airport expansion, and this year, some of that project actually started to, started to move forward. So we purchased a property for $465,000, and then we have to have a match of $150,000 on the new grant that was just, y'all just approved for the 1.5. So we will be budgeting that because we have, you know, we had to spend that money this year, and then it reduces the amount of the fund balance that we're reserving for the airport expansion down to 384,754. We also had the required grant match for the downtown revitalization grant. We had $150,000 already reserved in our fund balance for that, so that's just gonna take that down to 82,898. We also had $13,250 for the HVAC engineering and assessment professional fees. We had, I think, it says 125, but I actually believe it was 150 reserved in the fund balance for the wreck haul, so it'll reduce that balance down. The remaining 347,920, that's actually gonna reduce our anticipated ending cash balance, are for the fire truck that we had to pay the $138,000 down payment for the replacement of the fire truck that was wrecked. The startup cost for our municipal court, which was about $89,000. We've added in $75,000 for software and programming for an HR recruiting and onboarding. We are currently with a subscription-based software. They've increased the rate significantly. It could be anywhere from 33% to 53%, depending on whether we do one year or two year. And we decided that we have some other options available to us that might be better, so we get a return on investment on that one in three years if we go ahead and try to go this other route. And then the, making the assistant city manager position a separate position, I put in about two and a half months of salaries and benefits in there to cover once we actually get that position filled. For the budget amendments in the water and the wastewater sewer fund, we have a reduction of 477,295 for the total cash, but it's only gonna reduce the unrestricted by 157,107. We had two carryovers, the six-inch pipe burst sewer rehabilitation for 215,288, and $104,900 for the wastewater treatment primary sludge improvement. Those were expenditures that we budgeted in 1718. The funds were not completely spent, and so we're now carrying them over because they're being spent this year. And then the 157,107 that is reducing it, largely that is because we had $140,438 for the Graham Avenue Utility Infrastructure Engineering that y'all approved earlier in the year, so we can take advantage of the Tech Dot project. The attached budgetment reduced the stormwater drainage fund total cash balance by 253,970 due to $40,000 for Plan Development Review Services, $193,970 for the spring bouquet drainage engineering, and the $20,000 required grant match for our $2 million GLO, CDBG, storm drainage grant. The hot fund total cash balance was reduced by 82,637. 62,637 was net expenditures over revenues for Mula Fest this year, plus we're adding another $20,000 for the deposits that we'll need to pay this year to book the bands for next year. And then we had a carryover of $8,000 for our court technology fund. These were for our iTicket rider program. We had the money budgeted last year. It all didn't get spent, and so we're carrying it over to this year. There really, there was no impact for the landfill fund and the airport fund cash balances. There were some entries in there, but they were offset by revenues. And I can go over any particular budget adjustment that you would like. I just, there's so many of them, I really don't wanna to spend a lot of time boring you to death, so.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Lynn.
So, back to the line item under the city secretary for the software program. Do you anticipate there will be efficiencies gained by moving from the current vendor to?
I do think one of the options that we're considering right now is the Laserfish software that we currently have. There are some communities that use it for all of their onboarding. Some of the expense that we're looking at here is there's a forms, software, creation software, and a portal to be able to use it. And we could use that for other things, like our utility applications process could be handled that way. And there's some other things that we could actually utilize it for. So I do anticipate if that is the final route that's chosen, that's not 100% decided at this point, that it could be utilized for other things as well. And this $75,000 that we have, that is our worst-case scenario that we put in. Just, we talked to Laserfish and said, worst-case scenario, what are we looking at here? So it's quite possible that it might not cost quite as much, but we won't know until we get in there and start designing it. And Stacy, do you have?
So we've been using Laserfish for years, but we haven't used it to its full potential. And so when they came and said that the company we currently use for HR is going up drastically on prices, I actually went to Laserfish's conference back in February, and I said, well, hold on a second. We've got something here that we can use. And there are several large cities and ISDs that do their HR onboarding entirely through Laserfish. So it's, I really think what I've seen of it, it will greatly reduce some workload for our HR manager.
How many people do you think would have to be custodians, I guess, of that software program? I assume there's training involved and?
Really, once you get the workflow built into it, it runs itself. There might be some tweaking that has to be done. But that's what the major cost of what she's saying is, is for them to, because we're in such a time crunch that we don't have time for someone internal to build it. MCCI is gonna build it for us completely, and that's where that large expense is. And they did tell us that we would rather overshoot your quote by $10,000 than for you to get to the end of it and say, you owe us another 20. So they think they're really shot at high on that 75. But that will get us completely ready and set up to go.
Thank you. Carla Jessup?
Well, on the $20,000 for next year, did you include the carnival? Since we had so much trouble with the carnival last year.
There's a cost for that.
We don't have to put up a deposit. Did we sign a contract, though?
We are still in conversation.
Okay.
Any other question? Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2019, 2019-026, I believe, right, Stacy?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved as seconded. At this time, open up for any discussion. Hearing none, when I proceed to vote, all those in favor of adopting ordinance, ordinance 2019-026, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is approved. At this time, I'll entertain another motion adopting ordinance 2019-027. Yes, now can you go with any more? Maybe did we talk about some of the cost on that? Fees, plan review fees?
The fee schedule.
The plan review fees.
I'm gonna let Karen do that one.
Okay. Karen, come on back, come on back up.
Okay. So I don't know if everybody knows, but our building official, Rob Turk, is no longer with us. And we have a contract with Bureau Veritas to do our plan review on commercial and residential new builds. When I talked to them, there was some changes in the fee structure that they had. We asked for a new signature page. The contract had been signed back in 2008. And so they sent that with a new fee schedule. When we compared it to our fee schedule, we were only charging for commercial plan reviews. We were not charging for residential plan reviews. So that is part that's been added is the, to reflect that. So that cost will pass through, and it doesn't cost the city anything for those plan reviews. It'll be something the developer would have to pay.
Any questions for Karen?
I did have questions. Why are we charging more for single-family residents in commercial and multifamily? Why is the fee structure set up that way to charge single-family residents more?
That I would have to ask. I have a meeting with them on Thursday, and I can clarify that and get back with you. That cost came directly from them.
Yes, sir, Al.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Ms. Trussell, this is?
Excuse me, Mr. Trussell, this is kind of Plan B. We're going to discuss the plan, or we're going to discuss the potential for an interim building official in executive session tonight, and, and so this would be in the event that something occurred while that interim building official is not here, or if you guys didn't, didn't approve the, the proposed contract for the interim building official.
Alan, do we believe these rates are going to be a permanent rate increase moving forward?
Um, at this point, until, I, probably not, but they would be in place until we have a permanent billing official, which may in fact take some time because that's a very, very competitive field right now is, to quote some of the folks we've talked to, it is a talent poor field right now. There's not a lot of talent out there right now. And so, so as long as we need to rely on Bureau Veritas, yes, they'll be in place, or we may need to rely on Bureau Veritas.
Okay. Any other questions?
And, so that's the numbers they sent, because I'm with Carla. Normally, commercial is
Yeah.
More expensive than residential and everything I do, so that's going to be.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion adopting ordinance 2019, oh, 27. Move to second.
Second.
Move to second. Proceed, open this up for any discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no, now proceed to vote. All is favor of adopting 2019, oh, 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and 2019, oh, 27 is approved. Monica, anything else? Was that it?
I think it was.
Budget review.
Yeah, want to go ahead and get that, I guess, knocked out, too?
Sure.
Why not, huh?
If I must.
This is the budget review for the financial statements ending June 30th, 2019. We're nine months into our fiscal year, so we anticipate to be about 75% at everything. For our property taxes, we received 25,000 in June, which is 253,000 or 4.38% increase over the funds collected through June of last year. The county usually collects approximately 99% of our property taxes through June. The 6.02 million collected is 99.7% of the 6.04 that we have budgeted. For sales tax, we received 499,000 in sales tax in June, which is 33,000 over our target budget through June. We've received 215,000 or 4.73% more than the funds received through June of last year. We have seen a reduction in our, for May and June, we've had two months that our sales tax has been lower than the previous year, as the graphs indicate, but we're, I know that July was a little bit above, so we've seen a little bit of a slowdown, but we're not panicking yet. We're going to wait to do that for a couple more months to see if it's just a temporary lull and, and what's happening. For our hot funds, we received 400, 346 in our hotel occupancy tax revenue through June, a 36% increase over the 254 received last year. Of the $92,000 increase, 51,000 is revenue from Mula Fest, and 3,000 is investment income. The remainder is the hot tax itself. We spent 361,000 in hotel occupancy tax funds through June as compared to 244 last year. The main part of the increase is expenditures from Mula Fest and our tourism wages. The target budget for operating revenue was 19.1 million. We've received 21 million in revenue through June, which is 1.9 million over budget due to property taxes, sales tax, and interest income. The target budget for operating expenditures is 15.1 million. We've expended 13.8 million through June, which is a 1.3 million under budget. Please don't get excited, the year is not over yet. The operating revenue received last year was 19.8 million as compared to the current year's 21 million, which is a 1.2 million increase, which is property taxes, sales and other taxes, service charges, and investment income. Our operating expenditures last year were 13.4 million. The current year's 13.9 million, which is a $454,000 increase. Additional expenditures have been wages, our special collection, outside professional fees, maintenance, child safety grants, wages and advertising in the hot fund, and wages and economic development programs in the CETA fund. For our new programs, our street improvement are in progress, and our master plans are still progressing. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Monica? Thank you, Monica. Okay, at this time, we'll now move forward with CETA. Jeff, you got anything for us?
A couple, please.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Hope everybody's doing well after the good meeting and lots of action today. As I was preparing, it occurred to me that this is the last time, no, it's nothing funny or anything, but it's the last time I'll get to report before the influx of students come back and all of the excitement that hits us in this fall period, from sports to activities to everything else that happens. It's an exciting time that we should embrace because obviously the economics of our community start to improve as well. We get a lot of expenditures, a lot of visitors, both new and returning, and we're excited to welcome those into our area. Certainly, they impact our economy and quality of life, and that's something that we're all trying to do together anyway, and trying to help it be an even more attractive place for these folks. I have a couple of local updates. One, we have recently completed, we have a recently completed facade improvement which enabled a business to expand into Stevensville. Another that will be complete in the next 30 days or so, and have just received another application from, this time from a downtown business, which if approved, will make five businesses in the downtown area. We have assisted on that program. On a side note, one of our recent program participants sent us a note describing how their expansion into Stevensville has impacted their bottom line. Specifically out of this, they point out that business for them has increased each day. One of their customers specifically has increased their spending in that business in excess of 200% since the business opened in Stevensville. They're very optimistic about their opportunities in Stevensville, and the credit CETA is programmed with helping them get off on the right foot. So we're excited about what the facade improvement program is doing for some of our businesses. As for national trends, we try to give you a few factoids each month to take away, and we've been, been given some reports. In particular, the 2019-2020 retail and restaurant real estate outlook suggests some interesting things for us to consider. First of all, the, the location of restaurants, which we deal a lot with right now, the location of restaurants has always played a role in their growth. However, many are following the lead of the retail brethren by, number one, utilizing e-commerce, and number two, enlisting third-party, party delivery systems. For example, on a national scale, Subway is offering delivery at 9,000 locations. Obviously, that's not something that has ever been in play historically at a Subway, but now they offer delivery at 9,000 locations through partnerships with such places as Uber Eats, Grubhub, DoorDash, and Postmates. McDonald's, another example, has grown delivery from 200 test sites to 5,000 locations in just under two years. So we wanted to check and see what impact that might have locally, and in our market, just checking on DoorDash alone, it's one of the third-party delivery systems, just on DoorDash, 15 local restaurants utilize this service for food delivery. Of those, three national chains and 12 local and regional establishments. So speaks volumes about trend research, and we want to encourage other local businesses to look at how to leverage national trends to enhance their own bottom line. Another very interesting point is the emphasis on customer experience. A lot of, you'll see a lot of businesses nationally, and we're starting to see it come into our economy as well, on customer experience, being accomplished through store redesign, hands-on activities and classes, and in the addition of food and drink at places that historically have such service. Finally, I'd like to highlight something publicly as an opportunity to brag on yet another intern from Charlton State University. Many of you on council attended our last regular board meeting in July when Megan Hurd gave a presentation to the CETA Board of Directors. Her presentation showcased a vast amount of work that has gone into data collection as part of our collaboration with the ATIP Foundation, or the Agriculture Technology Innovation Partnership. As you may recall, ATIP is a recognized intermediary charged with taking research from such entities as the USDA and merging it with business and industry to create economic drivers for the marketplace. The work CETA has done to date, specifically that of Megan, has become a national model and had helped establish Stevensville as a leader in this effort. What does this mean? And we don't want to just give facts without kind of seeing what that might play into. It means that we've positioned this region to be the center for a new industry cluster for biomass and related economic drivers. It's a long process, but an important step in job creation and economic growth. To that point, we received an email today from a former undersecretary of the USDA who sent us a note saying this, in part, I'll just read the last paragraph. "We've had seven corporations that have participated as affiliates in this project, and one in particular is pursuing loan guaranteed prospects with USDA Rural Development for a facility to be constructed in the Stevensville area. In fact, they just concluded a productive meeting in Washington, DC this morning. Additionally, we recently identified at least two operations, or excuse me, two more corporations with operations in California and Canada that may have an interest in establishing operations in the Stevensville area. Thus, the inventory of assets that you have been developing with the foundation will be instrumental in attracting new bioeconomy-related operations to the area and enhancing existing companies and services in the area by engaging and expanding the bioeconomy." Thought that was good news for our area, so we'll continue to follow that and keep you updated and such. That's my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Exciting stuff. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
As presented, sir. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Move to second to present the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing no, now proceed to vote. All is fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it, the consent agenda will be approved in its entirety as presented. Okay. Alan?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, we begin our budget workshop session on Monday, excuse me, at 5:30. In your packet, you see that the council committee meetings are listed for August 20th. That's the day that Charlton has the open house for their football stadium, so we've moved that to August 22nd, which is a Thursday. The first public hearing, as you approved earlier on the, the proposed tax rate, is September the 3rd. The second public hearing is September the 6th, and we anticipate the adoption of the budget and the tax rate on September 17th. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Okay, comments by council members. I'll go down there with you, Mark.
Mr. Protem, it's been mentioned several times here tonight, and I just want to, I want to just commend Carla and Julie for the, the hours and hours they've spent trying to put a policy together for the allocation of hot funds. It's something we've been talking about for a year and a half, and, and you guys are, you're on the road to making it happen, so I appreciate that, both of you.
And I'll piggyback on that tomorrow. Julie is having hospitality training at the Hampton Inn, and so I encourage any business owners to have, that have employees that they might want to attend this tomorrow. It is completely free, and it's great training for your employees, and it helps our, our visitors. So you might consider that. Something from the museum. We have recently completed the refabbing of the Charlton House, the John Charlton House on our grounds, and so we'd invite everybody to come see the new restored Charlton House on the museum grounds.
Thank you, Carl. Nick? Nick, go ahead, sir. Ricky?
I'd just like to let everybody, don't remind everybody, but the new fundraiser for Habitat for Humanity, I don't believe they've never actually done a fundraiser, but this ties it well with our, with the Texas Music Office and our music-friendly community. A Voice for Habitat is a live singing competition. They, Habitat for Humanity has put together, and you can register online to compete in this at habitatforhumanity.org. I'm sorry, I think it's eratken, habitatforhumanity.org. And that registration closes at the end of August, so, and the competition will be at Twisted J live in October. So an exciting new event for the area.
Are you signing up, Ricky?
I am not a singer, sir. I'm a retired handsome honk, but I'm not a singer.
Which brings us to Brandon.
Handsome honk, huh?
You want to?
Well, handsome honk is in 10 days, and this year, it does, all proceeds, every penny goes to our fire department, police department here in Stevensville. Those guys have been working really hard. They got some good dance routines, some good talents coming up. I think there is a couple of tables left. If you want to get one of those, you can get with Mayor Brady, his wife Lisa, any of the fire police, and they can do that. They're also doing some fundraiser stuff. They're, they're, I commend them for, for all the hard work they're doing, and I have some bracelets they have for sale. It's got the blue line, red line, and stars and stripes. You can buy those for $5, and I'm the salesman up here, I guess, I get to, I get to do that. But all that money, like I said, every penny is going back to those guys to help provide equipment, stuff they need to make their jobs easier as they, as they work hard to protect us and, and keep us safe. So please support the event, support those guys, and ladies.
You get a commission off those things?
I didn't get a commission. I guess I'm going to have to buy the whole bag if I don't buy them, so.
So please.
Feel free to buy them.
Buy some braces. And August 16th, please come support that event. I hope we can raise about $40,000 at least for those, those folks, and I know they've got big plans. I know the police department had on their wishlist a helicopter. Side of the board, white, raised up money for a helicopter. I saw that on the board, the O2Is, wishlist helicopters, so. Anyways. All right. I have no other comments at this time, so it is 6:35, so we will recess the meeting and then, once with Texas Open Meetings Act, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551087 and 551074, we will reconvene into an executive session at this time.